Before we begin the meeting, unfortunately, we've had more loss in our district. Russ Anderson has lost his beloved wife Cathy, and Jamie Heatherman has lost his grandmother. So we will now take a moment of silence as an expression of our heartfelt sympathy to both families. Thank you, everyone. We'd like Mr. Anderson and Mr. Heatherman to know that we are thinking of you and your families, and just know that our hearts and our thoughts are with you. Thank you. First, we're going to start off with our student rep, Ryan Donovan. He's going to give us the rundown of all the great things that are going on.
All right, I'm going to start off with sports tonight. Girls' basketball opens this Thursday at home versus Shepherd Hill. Boys' basketball opens Friday at Shepherd Hill. And indoor track has a meet this Wednesday at Northbridge versus Northbridge, Grafton, and Marionapolis. Moving on into the school part, tomorrow night, we have the eighth grade transition night here at Oxford High School. It's tomorrow night at 7:00. It's to show the students and parents what the high school offers, and give a staff and student perspective on everyday life here, and the student council will have guided tours. Going into student council, on Wednesday night, we are hosting our Coffee House, which is from 6:30 to 8:30 here in the community room. It's like a mini talent show. It's all dark in here with Christmas lights. It's so much fun. It's going to be $5, and there'll be free refreshments, and we have some very talented acts performing, so it should be good. Santa's Workshop is going to be December 23rd. I believe we're charging $5. I have to double-check on that, though, because it's not 100 percent. And it's going to be 6:00 to 8:00 here in the cafeteria. It's a fun night of games, crafts, and a movie, and it gives parents a chance to go Christmas shopping on the weekend of Christmas.
What are the ages for that night?
It'll be mainly aimed at the elementary school levels. And there will be a visit from Santa that night, so I encourage lots of parents to bring their kids here. It's so much fun. National Honor Society held our Mr. Oxford pageant on December 8th, and the runner-up was Izzy Key, and the winner of Mr. Oxford 2011 was Jared Cannon. Best Buddies were planning our Christmas party, which is going to be next week, and that's always so much fun. I can't wait. Our art classes, Art III and Art IV, are starting the Memory Project in two days, actually. The group of kids this year is from Guatemala, and for those that don't know what the Memory Project is, it's part of an organization that we've been sponsoring here at the high school for quite some time. And we are sent pictures of orphans from various countries around the world, and the kids in Art III and Art IV make portraits of them in different media, because the kids won't have anything to remember their childhood by, and it's a great way to give them something to remember. And they're young age. It's so much fun. I'm on my second year, and I'll be doing one, and if not, two.
Do you know what country this year?
They are from Guatemala.
Guatemala.
Yep.
Thank you.
The Special Olympics, we started our first basketball practice last night here at the gym. Our coaches are Patty Ross, Kenny Stockhouse, and Kara Stockhouse. Our athletes that will be participating are Justin Stockhouse, Nicole Ross, Lauren Neeland, Chad Walker, Austin Barber, Janelle Bomberdear, Sam Vudas, and Maria Doherty. And we practice here in the gym on Sundays from 5:30 to 7:00, and that was a lot of fun, too. And that's all I have, I believe.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much, Ryan.
Thank you.
We appreciate that.
I'm going to stay.
You're going to stay? Great. Okay, very good. Now, I'd like Mrs. Ross to come forward, if she could, with her celebrity cheerleaders. Have a seat, ladies. Thank you very much for coming in. Hi, Mrs. Ross. If you could have everyone introduce themselves to the committee, we would appreciate that.
Okay. You want to start, Lauren?
Patty Ross.
Emily Maynard.
Thank you very much for all coming in. We have some celebrities here that made it to Gillette Stadium, a place that not all of us have been to yet. So if you'd like, you could tell us about the events and about your group.
I would. It was kind of like a chain reaction, which Mr. Wells was involved in. Can he come up?
He sure can. Mr. Wells is never known to be shy.
I know.
I don't know if that's good or bad.
In this case, it's okay.
I mean, we started, this is our third year doing the Spirit Squad, and last year, at the, I believe, June School Committee meeting, we talked about Special Olympics, and we'd be starting it this year. So we started off with cheerleading and entered in the Special Olympics. And they had us go to the Big E to represent Special Olympics Day. We were in a parade and everything. And then we went out to Gillette for the Olympics themselves on October 13th. The Wednesday right before Thanksgiving, Special Olympics called us and asked if we would go out to Gillette Stadium on November 4th and represent all of Massachusetts Special Olympics to promote their Play 60 program that they're doing, which, you know, it's like for kids to try and get them to exercise for 60 minutes a day. And every week, a different pro football team promotes the Play 60. And last Sunday, the 4th, was the Patriots' turn to promote it, and Special Olympics is their charity of choice, so they invited us. So we represent all of Massachusetts. So the girls went out on the field with the Patriots cheerleaders in the beginning, and they were right there with the helmet when the players all came onto the field, and they were all this close to Tom Brady.
How did they get there?
Yes, I was going to do that. We had Becky Laramie, who owns All Points Limo Service, donated limo for the girls for the day to drive us all down and back.
That's great.
Which was fantastic. It's like we were celebrities for the day.
Well, I think you are celebrities. We do believe that you are celebrities that are representing Oxford High, absolutely, so.
Thanks.
Yes, definitely. We all want an autograph.
And then we had, we had Channel 3 came to school Monday, the 5th, and interviewed us, and we were on the news that night. And I gave you guys a folder, telegraming, because that came in that Friday, because they wanted to get the story in the paper before Sunday so that everyone could go. And I think just, I think a couple of the girls just wanted to share a little bit.
Absolutely.
About their, Lauren, you wrote something down there?
Actually, I actually had no time to do this over the weekend. I was busy. My experience at Gillette Stadium was really good, because I get to stand with the cheerleaders and also get to see one of my favorites that we met the first time, because she worked with us and the other groups that were there. And she has really inspired me to just keep cheerleading.
That's great.
Sam, did you want to say anything?
I finally got to meet my favorite team and cheerleader. I absolutely love Tom Brady, because I think he's pretty cute. And it made me really happy to meet the Patriots, because all my family members are big fans. And I met some cheerleaders, and they were really nice to me. And I got to hold one of their pom-poms.
Excellent. Good.
Nicole, did you want to say?
I don't have any lines. Let's move to you.
You don't have what?
Okay.
Did you have fun?
Yeah.
You did.
Was the limo ride fun and being on the field?
I need lines.
Okay, we'll give you written lines next time. And Emily was with us, too. She's our coach.
Thanks, Emily, very much. We all think Tom Brady's pretty cute, too. At least the ladies in the room do.
You should see him on the Jumbotron.
Yeah, I bet.
And as Ryan said, we started basketball last night. We will still continue to cheer at the home varsity girl and boys' basketball game.
Right.
We started our Special Olympics basketball team last night, which is made up of 15 players. Ryan gave the athletes and partners. And we will, it's February 12th, we go to the Fay School in Salisbury for our qualifier, and then we will be in the Olympics March. I think it's the beginning of March. It's usually a clock.
Okay.
Usually play a clock.
That's great.
We'll be in the Olympics for that. We're competing as a unified mentoring team. And then we had also told you about the Project Unified status when we met in the spring, and we ended up, we did get that, because we are ahead of the curve. We are the only school in...
South of the city of Worcester, going out towards Mendenupton, out towards Tantascua. We're the only school, and South High School is the only school in the city, but we're the only high school that's a unified high school. There are several in the mid-watch, and when we get to track, that's who we will be competing against. In fact, Special Olympics is working, partnering, I should say, with the MIAA to have unified track as a recognized sport. So it could be one of the first states in the country to do that.
Well, that speaks quite well of Mrs. Ross's efforts and Mr. Wells's support, so thank both of you very much for all that you've done.
Mrs. Ross did procure that grant and new uniforms. The Unified Cheerleaders have warm-ups and new basketball uniforms. They're going to, I don't know if they were sized last night. I just came in.
Yeah, we did our sizes.
So new uniforms for basketball, and again, all this is under a grant, so it's at no cost. But the benefits for all of our students certainly are just tremendous.
That's great.
We also raised, I put in there on the trick-or-trot, we were the top team in Massachusetts. We raised $3,700 for our program here at the school. And that was open to anybody. Anybody could join. Anyone could donate. And the page after that is, we already have our webpage for the pull or plunge. We will be plunging in March. I'll be there to watch. I am not going in the chicken coop. I will be plunging. You heard it.
I will be with Ryan.
You will be with Ryan, yes. So again, anyone is welcome to join our team, and it's March. Can't be that cold.
Now, if the weather cooperates the way it has, you'll be okay. Still might be a little chilly, though. Well, that's great. Very good. Anything from the committee? Mr. Himmelberger? Oh, go ahead, Mrs. Cooney. Go ahead.
Excellent folder, giving us this information. Just to let everybody know, at home, the team fundraising goal was $2,000. Total raised, $3770, so almost twice as much as what your goal was. And I think that just speaks for itself. So, nice job. In the telegraming, I actually had people coming up to me that live in different towns saying, "Did you know?" So, the word is out, ladies. So, nice job.
Very nice job.
Thank you.
Mr. Himmelberger?
Mrs. Ennis, I just wanted to say thank you to Mr. Wells for providing the support, and for Ms. Ross for all of her help in organizing this, both in front and behind the scenes. It is outstanding that everybody has the opportunity, and I think that that speaks volumes and segues into what we are going to deliver as our message tomorrow evening to our prospective eighth-grade students. And congratulations to all of you. Well done.
Thank you all very much for coming in. We really appreciate it. Good job, everybody.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. If Ms. Nugent could come up with her students for the Invisible Children program here at the high school?
We don't have holders, sorry.
Okay, that's all right. If you could introduce yourselves to the committee, we would appreciate it.
I'm Zachary Brodna.
I'm Courtney Nugent. I teach English here. This is my third year.
I'm Sarah Smith.
And I'm the shy principal.
If you wouldn't mind filling us in on how the program's going, we know that Mrs. Briady kind of kicked this off, I think, what, five years now? Has it been? Maybe four or five years?
She started with the Legacy Project, which Ryan alluded to, with the painting pictures first, children in all over the world that didn't have memories of childhood. And then when I started my first year in '09, 2010, they were doing Legacy Project. Part of it was Uganda, and just so happened that I am obsessed with, I don't know if that's the right word, everything Africa. And when I was in college, I was involved with Stand, which was an anti-genocide coalition. And because it was Uganda, I became interested in Invisible Children, which raises awareness about child soldiers in Africa, and it's more geared towards high school students, whereas Stand was geared towards college. And so just to kind of jumpstart that, my first year was cool. And it helped me to do something that I wanted to do as a teacher, which was make the students aware that there is life outside of their hometown, so Oxford or wherever they're from. And so we formed a little group, but they're very powerful in what they're doing, so. Do you want to talk about what we're doing?
Yeah, sure. This year, we are really getting into fundraising for our group. At the beginning of the year, in early September, we started a book drive, and we had just stopped it about a week ago, and we raised just over 5,000 books. And those books will be going to Indiana, where they will be sold online, and all the proceeds will be going to the Invisible Children Organization. And then our fundraiser after that will be a dodgeball tournament, and then a fashion show. And at the very end of the year, we'll have our annual art show that we do every year that Ms. Briady helped us out with.
This will be our third year doing the art show. And so we got donations for the book drive from the entire Oxford community, and we raised, like, over 5,500 books in less than two months. Or we collected them, we boxed them, we're shipping them now. It's a tedious process, but it's cool to see the Oxford community rally around something that I'm passionate about, as well as the students that are involved with it, just to, like I said, to show that there is something going on outside of Oxford. And so to be aware of that is crucial, especially if, when after high school, they're going to go to college and be involved with the world. It's important for them to know what's going on.
How many students are involved in the project now?
There's approximately 10 of us that are involved. We have some stragglers here and there, but there are 10 really dedicated students. And so it's something that I appreciate as a teacher, because I was able to, I'm able to make connections that aren't just me giving you homework and detentions if you come in late to my class. So that's nice.
Very good.
Can you address the assembly and the benefits of that?
Yeah. My freshman year, and then this year, we had the Invisible Children group come out, and we did what they call screenings. And they would have a movie that they would, my freshman year, it was The Legacy Tour, right? And that was all about a young man that, Tony, that came to America after being a street, a night commuter, night traveler. And he was, it was just his dedication and his journey from going from the war-torn Uganda to over here in America. And then this following year, the film was a follow-up with him, and then a man, Nate, who had lost his life in a bombing over in Uganda, and just how Invisible Children has touched so many people across the nation with their road group and going over to Africa. And we actually just had the Webster Times come today and do an interview with us and take a couple pictures. So we're getting our word out slowly but surely.
So they've had the opportunity, the entire school through an all-school assembly, to actually meet with some of the student, or children, if you will, or young men that were soldiers and were held in captivity and have certainly survived. So they've been able to speak one-on-one and in small groups afterwards. They essentially spend the day, and we buy them lunch. It's something that, you know, Courtney certainly has volunteered to do this, and as a young, third-year teacher, her goal is just to make Oxford High School and all of its students very much more worldly aware of some of the atrocities that have taken place. So they've done a great job. And Sarah, although I watched Walking Tall the other day, and she walks tall quietly, but she carries a big stick. So she's very dedicated and works very hard. There are 25 boxes, if you notice on your way out, approximately 18 by 18 by 18, and there'll be another 26. Is that right?
27.
27. So there'll be over 50 boxes that will be shipped to Indiana. So they've...
I think we'll have about 75. We have a lot of books. I still have some in my car. So we're going to have a lot of books. So, and the money that's being raised is going to two different things. One is the Legacy Scholarship, which Invisible Children funds a student, or a few students every year from Uganda to come to the United States, become educated at top colleges in the U.S., and then go back and bring what they've learned to their community so they can better it. And then another aim is to purchase radio towers in Uganda, because if there's ever, like, a rebel group attacking a certain community, they want to have those radio towers to be able to warn the people ahead of time so they can actually move. And so that's what the money that we're raising is going to go towards. So it's nice to have something concrete to know where the money that we give to them is actually going to benefit.
Yeah, that's great. Very good. It is amazing. You're right. It is amazing. Well, it certainly does teach a life lesson that you would never receive elsewhere. For you to be able to do this and participate in it, the gift that you're giving, of course, these children, is an amazing gift. It's always been one of my favorite calls, so to speak. I've tried to support it personally, myself, because I just think it's so important. And the different phases of the artwork, I'm just, it's just amazing. So we hope that once you start going through the artwork and everything, if you could start bringing in maybe the different phases, and you can use the walls here, you know, if you want to put them on TV, we'll use them as our background. But really, thank you so much. It's a great, great effort. It really is. It's an amazing call. Anything from the committee? Okay, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Usually when it's silent, it's because they all agree, so that's good. Thank you. Usually. Next on the agenda, we have our minutes of our meeting of November 28th. I have a couple of corrections and additions. On the third page, it's the future business. Correction is December 12. When we go into executive session, we do have some changes in that, and you probably don't even know about them yet, Darcy, but I'm just going to run through them so that the committee also has an understanding. When we go into executive session, we need to list now what we're discussing. So I would like, under, there was a request to enter into executive session. It was that night to discuss the superintendent's contract, and also we discussed Dr. Laporte's contract. As you may all remember, Mr. Anderson recused himself. Under that, I would like also that he recused because of the discussion that was at hand, just so that we are covered our bases, so to speak. Don't have any other corrections or anything. I don't know if anyone else has anything? Like a motion to approve is written? Thank you. Second? Thank you. Call for the vote?
Yes.
Yes, four yes, one abstention. These minutes are approved. Thank you. Under unfinished business, as I just mentioned, we did have discussion in regard to our superintendent's contract. This committee has decided to go forward and continue our relationship with our superintendent. We hope that the upcoming three years or so, that we continue this relationship is once again moving forward at a steady pace. I personally have asked the superintendent to please submit to this committee in the next, hopefully for the next meeting, his goals that he has, that he sees for the district. These goals are something that can be attained, not goals of grandeur, I guess is the best way to put it, but real solid goals that he can make sure happen with his administrative counsel. I would like the committee to vote tonight, if you don't mind, that we begin negotiations with our superintendent upon ourselves after the holidays. So it would be the first meeting of 2012, which would be January 9th. And I would like that in the form of a motion, just so we can have it on record, that that be the first executive session we go into with our superintendent. Thank you. Any discussion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Call for the vote, please?
Yes.
Yes.
I have four affirmative, one abstention, so we will begin our first negotiating session on January 9th, 2012. Thank you. All right, new business. Mr. Himmelberger, the Gehagen Scholarship.
Thank you, Mrs. Ennis. As many in town know, the Gehagen Scholarship is given out every year, and there are strict requirements that go with it. And we have most recently been notified by the town treasurer that there is a return of undistributed funds from that scholarship in the amount of $14,000. And she requested that, for advisement from the school committee, and it would be my recommendation to, for the committee to vote to submit those funds back into the scholarship for availability for future students.
Okay, Mr. Peterson?
Why were these, were these students that didn't attend school, or why was this surplus at this point in time? What happened?
Several students, several students failed to meet the requirements, I believe. One of the requirements is to complete a degree in education, and I believe a couple of students chose different paths. So they did not meet the requirements for this particular scholarship. And those were requirements set by the scholarship, and so therefore they didn't meet that.
I understand. I'm well familiar with the Gehagen Scholarship, but the criteria to get that scholarship, even on an ongoing basis, was, that had to be in place even to acknowledge that. So I'm still concerned why there was a return on that, but all right. To even grant them the scholarship to start with. Thank you.
The granting of the scholarship is up to the committee, correct? The scholarship committee?
The scholarship committee, yes.
So... Right.
It's usually pretty tight, and why it fell through before and it got that far, I don't understand, but that's not our concern. It was, has to be returned, yes.
I'm sorry, did you have the dollar figure?
It's 14,000 even.
14,000 even?
Is the amount.
And you just want it returned back into the fund?
Yeah.
Yes.
I don't think it can be used for anything else.
No, it has to go back. Okay, if I could entertain, thank you.
Move to return or reimburse the Gehagen Scholarship for the unused money.
Second. Thank you. Any discussion? Call for the vote?
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Five affirmative. The funds can be now returned back in. Thank you very much. You can continue on, Mr. Himmelberger, with the mileage reimbursement update.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's interesting, the mileage reimbursement tries to keep pace with the cost of gasoline, and I know there's some politics involved. and I know there's some politics involved. It was 44 cents at the November meeting. The Board of Selectmen voted for the town's rate to be 50 cents, and the request was made for the committee to approve of that, so the town-wide, the same mileage reimbursement was set at 50 cents. And I'm not sure if that is the IRS rate now, but that's the town's, the Board of Selectmen had voted that for the town side, so...
The IRS and the state are paying 48. You're allowed to take 56 on your 2106, your tax return.
If I could ask, Mr. Matthew, about how much do we reimburse when we have...
It's usually a couple hundred dollars a month total for all of the people that have to travel in district.
Okay. Good, thank you. Anything else from the committee? Any thoughts on accepting the rate of 50 cents?
It may seem small, but I disagree with it. The state, the state allows 44, the federal allows 48, and I don't know where the town came up with the 50 cents, or how. Something that they did on their own, their own figuring somehow, for some reason, why they need that, they don't have that many people traveling, they have all-town vehicles and everything, so... Anyway, no, I don't agree with it.
Okay. Pleasure of the committee of what to do here, please.
I would move to leave ours as-is.
Any discussion, any comment?
And I'm sorry, ours is currently 44.
Forty-four.
Forty-four.
Currently 44.
Help me out, people. What would you like to do? So, would you like to make a motion, Mr. Peterson?
I did.
Oh, you did make it? I'm sorry.
To leave it as-is.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Anything else from the committee? I'll call for the vote.
Yes.
Okay, what do we want?
We're voting to leave it at 44 cents.
And not call it to 50.
Excuse me?
Yes.
Yep. Yes.
And I will vote no. Thank you. Four affirmative, one no. Mrs. Daley, if you could come up with Mr. Yvonne? Come on up. And now we're going to have a presentation in regard to the John Collins Writing Project that the schools have now used as part of their curriculum, which I was able to witness, I thought was very good at the middle school, and a kindergarten curriculum update where this committee has many questions and comments in regard to that.
Is it okay if we do the kindergarten curriculum?
Absolutely, whichever way, yeah, yeah. You sure can.
Something to happen over there?
Magic.
Yeah, magic of some sort. As requested by the committee, I put together the curriculum that we're currently using in our kindergarten classrooms, and this was taken from a document that was created several years ago with the Massachusetts Frameworks, when they were implemented, that was created. Fortunately, or unfortunately, with the Common Core State Standards, this is, this is a project that will need to be revisited. There will be some changes, K through 12, with the curriculum as it stands now. Some minor adjustments, I don't think anything will be major from what we've seen of the Common Core State Standards. But listed here are the goals and the skills that each kindergarten student is expected to be introduced to in a level of success, I guess. Most of them are developing, our kindergarten teachers are extremely busy, many students have never been into any kind of organized schooling prior to coming to kindergarten here. And now with the full day, that gives them substantial time to work diligently at mastering, or coming closer to mastering many of these skills. I don't know if you have a question on the document that I can answer, something specifically as far as skills, as far as our reading programs or our math program?
Mrs. Ravelli?
So what we have here is basically, these are the standards that were put out back in 2001, correct?
Yes.
That's what's listed here. Okay, so the curriculum, what I found was that we have the, we'll say for math, for example, if we pick one, we're using everyday math?
Correct.
Okay. But I guess, when I think of curriculum, I think about, you know, what other teaching strategies are we using? What other books are we using? Are we using the internet to, you know, teach some of these things? So I'm wondering where those sorts of examples, you know, are you looking to those for examples? Do you, I'm assuming we're using these things?
We certainly are. With math, with the Everyday Math Program, we just purchased some iPads, or One Initiative that are being used in some of our programs, and the Everyday Math Games that we are currently using in the classroom are now apps that we have on the iPads that the students are using as well. I don't know if that, teachers are using the math boxes and all of the manipulatives that come with the program?
So it, it sounds like, you know, I'm sure that there's lots of other things we're doing, except for using this one Everyday Math book, or whatever. But I guess, is there anywhere that it's shown what you are actually doing if you pick, you know, one of the standards? Yeah, I don't know, pick one, Counting to 20, you know, is the first one here. Is there anywhere where we list what we do, to make sure that this is something that we're doing every day in every class?
I think teachers use a variety of things through the school year.
But we don't have the curriculum mapping or anything, have we done that from the 2001 Frameworks?
Yes, there's some curriculum mapping that's done across the curriculum, certainly from classroom to classroom and grade level to grade level.
Okay, so we are doing that?
Yes.
Okay, that's comforting to know.
Go ahead.
Anything else, Mrs. Ravelli?
Well, I guess that, you know, just that we should have, or the teachers should have these examples and be sharing them. That's my concern. And that we're, because what ends up happening is we have holes, we have some teachers that will teach certain things because that is a strength for them. And if we have, you know, sort of, I'm not saying that we need a cookbook, because they're all educators, but we still need some, I guess, more specific guidelines as to how are we going to teach this. How many different ways are we teaching Counting to 20? I'm sure there's more than one.
I'm sure there are. Many, many.
But I think that when you look at the new curriculum that's coming in, these core, this core curriculum that's coming in, the Common Core, they've upped the ante quite a bit. And I know kindergarten is, this is just, what, the first year? So we're working on year two for kindergarten, right?
Our first year.
Full day, yes.
Full day, yes, yes.
Okay. So those were some of my concerns at this point, because the content of what we're teaching, I guess, wasn't clear.
This is state mandated.
Right, these are all state mandated, but how you teach it is not state mandated?
No, that's up to the individual teacher. To use a variety of skills and initiatives to secure that those children know that when they're in their classroom.
So that's up to the individual teacher to pick and choose what they...
Not what they teach, but how it's delivered.
But how it's taught, okay.
Mr. Peterson?
I still have concerns along the same lines, along with Mrs. Ravelli. You probably already know, I toured the school with Mr. Yvonne and Mrs. Ravelli Friday, and I tried to pick at some, and I did specifically pick some of the kindergarten classes to go to for a reason. The first document we got, quite frankly, was nothing but a copy of the Massachusetts Association Frameworks with a few pieces missing, quite frankly. There were some critical keys that were not incorporated in that, and I finally got through that Frameworks piece that you handed to us, what, two, three months ago? I'm looking at this, and I only got it Friday night, and I haven't had the time to digest it totally, but this is, to me, again, like Mrs. Ravelli is saying, it's the enhanced Frameworks of what is mandated. But what I was asking for, and the reason I went to the school to see, I wanted to see what they're teaching, how and what. And there were some things missing. We have two new classrooms, four old ones that have all the same materials. The two new ones don't have some of the same materials. I'm concerned about that, and I am concerned about, teaching is subjective, I'm well aware of that. And quite frankly, I've heard that I've been told I know anything about education. Well, I've been around a little longer than some people realize with family and everything else. I want to see, and I want to see something in writing, a specific, at least one classroom or how it's being taught, without having to go down there. And I want to see an update on that, is what I wanted, Mrs. Daley, all right? Quite frankly, the teacher to pick the brains would be Ms. Bushy. And that kindergarten teacher's been with us for quite some time. And she did, I did take a look at her classroom and the materials that are out there, available to the students, and I think that's what Mrs. Ravelli and I are looking for, what the curriculum, what's happening in the classroom, not what's state mandated, and we know that. We all follow the frameworks, or supposed to anyway by this point in time. And I'm aware that the frameworks are going to be changing again in 2012 and 2014. So it's an arduous task to keep up with the frameworks, yes. But it's the reason I chose to go down to that school right now, because I wanted to see what was actually happening in the kindergarten, because quite frankly, I'm the one that fought and enforced the full-day kindergarten. I think, sitting talking to Mr. Yvonne, we're on the right track, and the teachers like it, and he likes it. But it really wasn't given to us what I was looking for, okay?
We can certainly...
I would like to see another document, an adjusted document, not, now from the Frameworks to a glorified Frameworks to what we're actually doing, okay?
Sure.
And I'm not saying that every kindergarten teacher, you know, we talked the spiral effect and everything else, every kindergarten teacher's not going to be at the same level and using the same books. And I'm not looking to buy 75 books for 75 kids if in the spiral only one teacher needs 25 and it can continue to go around. I do see some lacking of materials, and I asked Mr. Yvonne to put that together for me. I want to take a look at materials and see what's going on in all the classrooms and inventory, because if we don't have the money, that's not your problem, it's ours to find the money to have the curriculum and the materials in the classroom.
That survey's been done, Mr. Peterson. We had...
I'm not putting you on the spot, but you know, we had a long conversation, and we spent a couple hours with Mr. Yvonne, and he's doing a fantastic job down there, but it was the hard way to find out what's actually happening. They should have come to us quicker, okay?
The two teachers you were talking about, there were six items total, that weren't the same between, and they've been ordered...
If it's only one item, we're on the same page and we're in the same direction. I'm not gonna spend tons of money on books just to sit on a shelf if a third grade needs something, all right? And we have the right to juggle money from line to line to get, and my concern is, I want the materials in the classroom. I don't want to keep seeing capital spent until the kids are taken care of first, okay?
Mr. Himmelberger?
I think that if I get the sense of the committee and what Mr. Peterson, Mrs. Ravelli are looking for, it's almost like you want to see the teacher's master course outline, I believe.
Something to that effect.
Because teachers know by this document, this is what I have to cover this year. Now, teachers have the ability to teach different parts of this at different times of the year, but they have to make sure they cover what's here.
Right.
I think what you may be looking for is something more like a master course outline, where a teacher builds the lesson plan off of that.
Off of that.
And I'm sure we could produce that as well.
And I'm not trying to put you or the teachers on the spot, but we do have some great teachers down there that will cooperate and put that on paper for us. And I think, like I said, Ms. Bushy's been around a while, and I'm sure that she would appreciate sharing her way of doing things with us, okay?
And I'm going to just go on that same line there. And I think it's important, I mean, what we always are asking for is the information to be out there so we see that transparency, but we also want our parents and guardians to have an understanding of what goes on in the classroom. And I think that's probably one of the concerns of this committee, is that's what, we understand this document, we get that, but it's the back, what's behind the document, what makes this document what it is. And in visiting, I understand what Mr. Peterson was saying too, you want to make sure that all of these things are being covered, yes, absolutely, but how does a teacher do it? And I think that is true, not only of kindergarten, but I think it's district-wide. It should be everything. And it gives, it gives us that, I think, that sense of responsibility that we're making sure that our principals, our superintendent, our teachers are all performing in the way we want them to, the way we expect. We're kind of holding our superintendent to his job. So in saying that, I think that's something that we should all work on, and I don't know if Mrs. Ravelli, she may have an idea or two to help this along.
Well, I'm just, my other concern when we went to visit was that, when I asked, you know, what are we doing about, you know, looking at the curriculum and looking at the new Frameworks and this new, the new Common Core standards that are coming out, how are we going to meet all of these requirements? But there's not, it doesn't sound like we have common planning time to do that, it doesn't sound like there's a committee that has been formed to look at the standards, and we've had them now for 10 years. And that's very concerning to me. I know that in other districts, this work has been, you know, for four or five years, we've been looking at specifics, you know, picking apart each little standard and seeing, well, then how do we, and matching it up, and making sure that we are addressing it all. Because in kindergarten, it's easy, I would think, that we can, I could look at this document and say, oh, sure, you know, counting to 20, well, goodness, if you do your calendar in the morning, you've done this. And you do it day in and you do it day out. That's an easy one, but when you get up in the grades, it becomes more difficult to say, oh, yes, I do that, but how do I know? What specifically addresses that issue or that standard that they're listing here for us? And I guess I'm just very concerned with the Common Core. And are we ready to do all of that and to move this system into, well, I think it's what, 2014? It has to be done? 2014? That's only a few years away.
Mr. Peterson?
Again, I'm not, I'm not gonna sit here and tell a teacher how to do it. Teaching in a classroom is very subjective, and how they get there, as long as we're all getting to the same place at the end, is my concern. I agree with Mrs. Ravelli, and that was one of the questions asked. And I know I sat here, and we cut back a lot of budgets, and the only common planning time, I guess, is at the high school and the middle school right now. But after a year and a half of asking about this, I would have thought we could find some time, you, Mrs. Daley, Mr. Yvonne, to sit down with the teachers as a group or something. They meet themselves at lunchtime after school. I gotta, I have to commend the teachers for taking this and running with it themselves because they are concerned about this classroom and the kindergarten, especially bringing in two new, not new teachers, but two teachers that didn't have the same materials and things that they did to move into a year ago. And they've helped each other along, and that's camaraderie that he has at his building is phenomenal. So I just want to commend the teachers. And again, I would never go in their classroom, I think we're well-received in their classroom, and they were willing to share ideas with us. I think that's what Mrs. Ravelli is saying also. They have to be able to share with each other and you and Mr. Yvonne, so I don't know where we've missed the boat here for 18 months, but I'd like the speed picked up a little bit right now.
Anything else from the committee? Mrs. Ravelli?
Come on, you have a lot of other ideas, but we can get to them later.
You don't want to put the subcommittee forward?
Do I want to put a, well, I mean, that's, are people, are people seeing this the way I'm seeing it?
Yes. I think you have the committee's support.
Okay.
I mean, as from everything I've heard and what I'm hearing tonight, I think you do have the committee's support. I think, as you said, you've brought the issues forward that were concerns, I mean, we've all had conversation on this, that were concerns, and I think that now it's our duty to make sure that it's moving in a proactive, you know, manner now, because we are, we, like Mr. Peterson said, 18 months has passed, and we haven't seen some of the things we were looking for, so now here we are. So if you are interested in putting a subcommittee together, it would include a kindergarten teacher or two, it would need to, it would be desperately needed. The superintendent should sit on that committee with Mrs. Daley and possibly Mr. Yvonne, and a member or two of this committee so that they could report back to us the recommendation. I know it was one of your thoughts, so if it's something you wish, yes, sir?
I agree with what you're trying to do with the committee, but I would like to see, I don't know where this stuff is stored right now, the material that we had on the original search of a full-day kindergarten situation.
Oh, gosh, that...
I know, so let's, I guess, move... So let's, I guess, move forward and forget about that, because we'll probably never find it right now at this point in time. So it's not your fault, but...
Well, we can wait and see what Mrs. Daly brings back to the table with Mr. Yvonne.
Next time around, and then establish something that we need to work with.
We can do that.
It may be unfounded first.
Well...
Well, we can always set a deadline of what we're looking for.
When do we set a deadline?
To your pleasure, miss.
To my pleasure?
Yes. What would you like to see? You're not going to hang me out there all the time. First meeting in February?
When would that be? That would be what?
Thirteen.
Thirteen? Does that give you enough time to gather some information, do you think?
It's two months.
I think so.
Okay, all right. So we will have you on our agenda for the first meeting in February to discuss this further and see some progress of what it is that we're looking for so we can, we, our whole, the whole impact here is to move forward, is to move this district forward. This has been a very slow-moving district for a few years, and I think that, I'll speak to why we're keeping this superintendent right now, because we have established a relationship that needs to be cultivated. To continue to cultivate that relationship means we've got to cultivate these programs and everything that is happening with our curriculum and our frameworks. So in moving forward, so you have some idea of how this committee is going to roll for the next few months. Yes, Mr. Yvonne?
If I could make a suggestion. I understand at the moment you're looking for answers for questions around kindergarten, curriculum, and instruction. As we go beyond that, if we're going to put a committee together, whether it be combined with the school committee or just within the school department itself, we look at a committee of K through six, possibly K through twelve, as we're looking at incorporating the Common Core standards into our curriculum so that we've got the bridge from one grade level to the next represented, from one building to the next represented, so that we're not in second grade undershooting what third grade may be looking for, or vice versa, overshooting it, and...
Yeah, just kind of keep it rolling. Mr. Peterson?
I was waiting, but I totally agree with Mr. Yvonne's thought.
Definitely.
We talked about that, and I would like to see a curriculum subcommittee set up to work with them, and I don't think we even need to wait. I would like to see it start quicker than that, quite frankly. Yes, if that gives Mrs. Daly and Mr. Yvonne two months to come back to us with theirs, in the meantime, we can start establishing other parameters to meet the whole educational curriculum of this community and this district. So I don't know how you want to handle it, if you want to wait till the first meeting in January to mull it over, to formulate a committee?
Yeah, I think I would like that, and if Mr. Yvonne could, or through the superintendent, come back to us with anyone in your building that's interested to serve on this subcommittee, and let's get some meeting dates together and that. So for our January ninth meeting, okay?
That's fine with me, thank you.
We'll have everything in hand, and we'll be able to start that. And I think a curriculum subcommittee district-wide is, can only benefit this district wholly. I really do. I think it would be a great thing. All right, yes, sir?
The reason I say that is because I don't want, you don't want to get into your business, but we are unable to and have been unable to afford a full-time curriculum director. So I think that's part of our fault too for the lag for the year, and it shouldn't have gone that long. But I think we need to work with you to get this thing moving differently for curriculum for the whole district, where we can't afford a full-time director. I mean, that's not taking anything away from you and your two positions, but we need to concentrate, as far as I'm concerned, on curriculum before I move on.
Very good. Thank you very much. Anything else? Thank you very much. Okay. Now we can go on to the John Collins Writing Program.
Do you want me to drive?
No, I can drive.
Okay, drive-by-touching.
All right. As you know, the John Collins Writing Program, after, I think, years of mulling over different programs, this district administration decided on kind of exploring or piloting the John Collins Writing Program last year. And we had representatives from all four of our schools attend a day-long workshop or training with other educators in October 2010. They came back, they piloted for the remainder of that school year, giving certainly their feedback to their principals and Mr. Himmelberger and myself. At that time, it was decided that we would go with John Collins. And this year, this fall, we trained, one of our first days of school, we trained teachers in all four buildings. We had three presenters come in, phenomenal presenters, who put on great appropriate presentations at each of the buildings, lots of comments, positive comments from teachers in all levels across all curriculums, and we implemented, fully implemented this year in our Grade Twelve classrooms. I don't know how much anyone here or at home knows about John Collins, but it's actually, this program is broken up into five different types of writing per se. The first type is capturing, kind of brainstorming, the old process writing, uses the brainstorming as does John Collins. Type two shows what a student or a writer knows about a topic. Type three includes specific content, specific details, three things or FCA's, focus correction areas, that a writer needs to be familiar with. Type four is a piece of writing that's been read by the writer, then corrected or edited by a peer. And type five is an actual published draft, a project, an essay, something that is, they've gone over several times and made any corrections to it. Type one, very simple, fearless for even students who are sometimes shy about writing. There's no real right or wrong answer. It's an informal assessment for the teacher. If he can check it with just a check or a minus, yes, they completed it, no, they didn't, and they get credit for it. Leads the frightened writer into opening up a little more. It's a timed writing. I'll give you two minutes. I want you to write everything you know about weather in New England. And they write it. As long as they've written something on the paper, a child is graded as completing the assignment. Leads into a type-two writing, a little higher stake, shows that the writer, what the writer knows about something, a specific topic. There is an answer to a question. Do they answer it correctly or incorrectly? Sometimes teachers might choose to grade this as a quiz. It's a check for mastery of skills. It could be, tell me three things you know about the start of the Revolutionary War. As long as they list any three things, they're correct. The format may be a list of words, it could be a phrase, it could be a few sentences. Nothing is correct to this virus, but the mechanics of it, the conventions, do they use correct spelling, correct punctuation, that sort of thing. It's really testing or assessing what they know about the topic. Type three, again, a little higher stakes than type one or two, has substantial content here. They definitely use in focus correction areas, and the teacher will tell the student prior to assigning this, I'm looking for this, this, and this. Okay? So the children know specifically what they're going to be corrected on. Sometimes you can give a topic to a student, and they write and write and write, might come up with two or three pages, and not say one thing that you really want to hear or you're really looking for. A type-three writer writes a draft, he reads it aloud to himself, they check to make sure they have all three requirements, and they make any corrections before they pass it in. Definitely a higher stake. The teacher might grade this as, could be an essay, could be homework assignment, might be a test question, getting more into something that would be written. I guess the process there should improve our open-response questions in all subjects, in all subjects. Type four writing is a type-three writing. It's been corrected and critiqued by a peer. All the corrections are made by the author, the writer, and two copies are kept by the author. One would be passed into the teacher for assessment. And finally, type five, we're still working from type one, we're building on. Type five writing is a published draft. This is a final draft of something that may have been corrected several times, may have been read aloud and corrected by a student, passed it to a peer who critiques it and proofreads it, so that everything is perfect by the time that it is ready to be passed in. Could be an essay, it could be a project, it could be a test, it could be a report, it could be anything. And that's pretty much what we're doing right now. We are working, starting right through kindergarten, right through Grade Twelve, in all subjects. You walk down the hall, the kids know what the types of writing are because they're using it in every classroom at various times. It might be, it could be an exit slip on the end, at the end of the day, a teacher's brief assessment to see what a student has learned in the, from that class just on the way out. Write two sentences about whatever they are teaching that day, and that's a quick little assessment for the students. Close stakes, easy for the teacher to correct, yet the teacher knows immediately how the student is doing. And with doing it frequently, obviously, they're becoming more experienced writers and becoming better writers.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Mr. Peterson?
Have you just been experimenting this with a certain amount of classrooms, or have we moved to all grade levels with this, K through twelve at this point?
K through twelve, fully implementing.
Fully implementing.
And I've seen it in my home with my eighth grader, and there are...
That's the only thing I don't see anymore is in my home.
And I do notice that the work that she does is very systematic.
It is very systematic.
It is. I mean, the research and then the, you know, what follows, what follows, what follows. A project that may be a writing of a report would take about a week because of all of the different phases she has to work on. It is a lot of work, makes them think, that's for sure, and that I thought was really impressive. And I did go into one of the eighth-grade classes over at the middle school a few weeks ago, and I kind of watched it, and you could see how everything started out on a note card, and then...
It rose.
Yeah, it certainly does, because the project at the end was a poster. And who would've known that that wasn't going to be just a written paper or typed paper? It was going to be a whole, well, poster of all kinds of information that started off of a note card. So it really worked, it really worked. I thought it did, anyway. Molly seems to like it, and I, you know, that's...
Students are familiar with when they're using it in high class, whether it's the health class, the science class, the math class, or music class.
We've needed a writing, a really solid writing program in the district, and I think that we have found it. Yeah, I think we did have to. Anything else from the committee? Okay, thank you very much, Mrs. Daly. We appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Yvonne, very much for coming in. I will pass to Mr. Himmelberger for the approval of the Oxford Middle School Providence trip.
Thank you, Mrs. Ennis. As those that were here last year would remember, Mrs. Hackett was able to take fifty students to Providence College for a program called Project Providence. And there's over a thousand middle school students who were invited to Providence for a day of programs around good sportsmanship exercise, proper nutrition, nutrition as well as education, and then they get to watch the Lady Friars basketball game. Because this is an out-of-state trip, even though it is close by, Mrs. Hackett was asking for the committee's approval to once again take fifty students on Thursday, December twenty-second, down to Providence College. And they will be leaving Oxford Middle School at eight fifteen and returning at three thirty.
So move.
Thank you. Do you have a second? Thank you. Call for, any discussion? Call for the vote, please?
It was worthwhile project, experimental year, so...
Very much worthwhile, yes, thank you. Call for the vote, please?
Yes.
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 Yes, five affirmative. Please let Mrs. Hackett know, we wish them all a wonderful trip, and the chair of the school committee can't wait to go.
Thank you very much. Thank you to the committee.
Our, I know, you look at this one and you say, oh, boy, budget discussion, seems like we just finished and we start up again.
Getting tired.
This is, I'm sorry.
No, please, go ahead.
This is, to present to the committee, two questions. One would be the date that we would present the budget to the committee. The governor's house one budget comes out at the end of January, so we would propose that February thirteenth, which is the first meeting after that budget is publicized, would be the ideal date to bring that FY-13 budget before the committee. The other topic that goes hand-in-hand with this is for the committee's consideration to, again, offer a teacher retirement incentive. If you recall, we tried this last year. There's a couple of reasons that I think this would be an important exercise once again, but with a little bit different scenario. One would be that the amount offered would be a flat $3,000. And if a teacher was going to retire, they would have to declare that by January thirty-first. This would allow Mr. Matthew to have a much more accurate reading in terms of teacher salaries as we build that budget for FY-13. And the reason why I think the January thirty-first date makes sense with this moderate incentive is that we are hearing that many teachers are considering retirement. And certainly, there is no date by contract that they have to declare. However, if we know for sure how many, then there's a lot of salary, budget salary dollars that can be adjusted based upon that. It would be the recommendation of $3,000 because it's certainly not a small amount, but it's not as big an impact as we had before. I think that gets folks' attention so that if those that are on the fence would be considering it, that they would consider it and make their plans known by January thirty-first. It would be a huge help. Potentially, eight or ten teachers could take advantage of it and let us know by January thirty-first. It would have a huge impact in narrowing the real budget dollars for next year. So I just put that out for the committee's discussion. We would certainly still be able to vote it up or down as late as January ninth if the committee still chose.
Mr. Anderson?
Is this a buyout of the $3,000? Would this be just for teachers, or would this be system-wide for anybody that would want to jump into it?
This would be for the OEA members. And the proposal, certainly, obviously, there are, some of them have been teaching for, in the district for quite a while and have substantial salaries, and to be able to replace those salaries with lower salaries is where the budget planning really would come into the fore.
If Mr. Matthew wouldn't mind, I was wondering if maybe you could put together for us just a hypothetical draft of numbers, no names, nothing like that, just maybe a salary, if they took the buyout, what the impact would be, so we could kind of see the numbers, because there, I mean, if we're talking about ten teachers, that number could be quite significant, you know? It could really be a boost for our budget in bringing in teachers at a lower salary. So if we could just see something, if that would be okay?
Try and email the committee something.
If you could just drop it in the email to us, that would be, that would be great. Okay? So you need to have some kind of decision on this by the ninth, you think? Okay?
To make it, to make the information valuable, yeah.
Okay. One other request I'm going to make is, I don't know what has happened with our communication, really with the Board of Selectmen, but I am going to request that as our budget process begins, that we start having conversation face-to-face with our Board of Selectmen. We've done it in the past. The presentation has always been made by the superintendent. I don't think this, you have made a presentation, I think maybe one presentation you've made in regard to our budget. I know all previous superintendents did sit before the Board of Selectmen, had a question-answer session, comments, committee members here have spoken. I would like to see that again. I think it's very important. I think all town departments should... should have discussion, but that's just my thought. I think that we're going, finally going into a budget season, so to speak, that's not as volatile as the past, maybe things are just going to start to, I think it's still going to be very tight, don't get me wrong, but I don't think it's going to be as tough as it's been for the past three or four years. So, that's something I'd like Mr. Superintendent to have discussion with, either our town manager or send a letter to, to the chair of the Board of Selectmen, to let them know that is our intention, that we do begin discussion. Anything from the committee?
That's fine.
Okay, thank you.
My turn.
I appreciate that.
I agree, ma'am, sure, I think it is going to be, I think we're numb to it, and we're just getting into the process, and it's not going to be a much better year from where I sit, on two different levels, but I think we become numb to it and have adjusted to working with it, not that I agree with it, more monies need to be found for all of us town-wide, not just the school department, but there has to be some other way of refinancing all of our endeavors, if it's working with each other, and I agree with you.
Thank you. So hopefully, we can get that, and have maybe a few minute meetings before your presentation, I think is crucial, because let's say some of these teachers do take this $3,000 bump, so to speak, we're looking at a very different budget, I think.
Plus, we're coming back to contract time, too, also.
We are, and we are going to, Mr. Peterson and I, I think I've told the committee, we are going to go for a three-year contract, no more year-to-year, we're going to try for a three-year, I should say, as much as we can. All right, anything else in regard? Thank you very much. I don't have any correspondence, but I will make a brief comment in regard to the anti-bullying subcommittee. We did have a meeting last week, and there is a no-name-calling day, which is the fourth Wednesday in January. This is something Governor Patrick signed into legislation, Oxford is going to entertain having a no-name-calling week, and it would be school-wide. So it's something that we're going to be discussing at our next meeting, which is next Monday, the nineteenth. We also are looking into having peer-to-peer skits be done at each school, the elementary having the middle school students come in, and the high school having, I'm sorry, the high school going to the middle school, so we can kind of keep the age range appropriate. So we've got a few things in the works, we hope to come to the committee probably in January to let everybody know what's happening with that. If anyone on the communications or vacation subcommittees want to put out the dates, please, by all means, let Melissa know in the central office, and she can post the dates of your meetings, and if you could report back to us, maybe before your committee has recommendations, that would be great. That's the only thing I have there for the...
Is it the fourth Wednesday?
It is the fourth Wednesday, which, yeah, and it's a statewide no-name-calling day. Oh, and also, we're looking for a school motto, an anti-bullying school motto, that would be district-wide, and we're hoping to make that a contest for the students. And now, Superintendent, you're up again.
Thank you, Mrs. Ennis, just a couple of quick announcements, I wanted to thank everybody for their patience, the last couple of months have been unique in central office experience. We expect fully to move in December twenty-seventh into our new central office, and next week and the week after, we'll be, the central office staff will be busy packing and editing and moving things into the new office space. Also, I urge everybody to please look at the school calendars on the oxp s.org site. Everyone knows that tomorrow night here at the high school is the eighth-grade transition night. Tuesday, sorry, Wednesday, the fourteenth, is the Oxford Middle School concert at six, and the Monday, the nineteenth, is the Barton concert at six, and then Tuesday, the twentieth, at seven, is the high school concert, and then Chafee has theirs on the twenty-second, Thursday, so we made sure we didn't...
Do you need any?
Made sure we didn't overlap, so everyone can get to all of them if they want to sing, and, but those dates are on the calendar, as folks can go on the website to look, and I wish all watching and everybody here a very Merry Christmas and safe holidays.
Thank you very much, appreciate that. Mr. Matthew? Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Peterson?
Before we move on to the superintendent, I know everybody's thrilled when we're finally getting somewhere with an office for you, have they done anything about signage?
In terms of...
Terms of signage?
On the doors themselves, in the, inside the place?
No, outside the building, you know, direction two, that, I mean, that's a multiple-use building now, and I haven't heard or just seen any discussion or anything about signage of our facility, right, in the major facility.
Right.
Obviously, Signage Street has a sign out front, we're not going to probably be able to move that anywhere.
No, I don't think so. That, that phase of the project of doing the exterior is still, is in negotiations, in terms of what is going to be there, how big, where it's posted, but there will be directions to find us.
That's what I'm getting at, I guess, obviously, even if it's just on the door, like any major office building, you can find it from there, but from the road...
Right. We will, I'm sure, have something.
Set back on an angle, it's not flush with the road, all right.
Put you out there holding the sign? Put you out there holding the sign?
Start whittling.
My friends. You didn't hear that, the other end, Steve's going to put me out there holding the sign, so...
I told Steve to stop whittling.
No, we'll make sure we get one.
All right, thank you.
That's good, thank you.
Excellent job.
Very good.
Good answer.
Mr. Matthew?
Well, not to deprive Mr. Peterson of any employment opportunities, but we all are certainly looking forward to the move the week of December twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh, twenty-eighth. It has been a couple of months of trials and tribulations. At the next meeting, I'll have the updated quarterly report that we talked about, including the revolving funds and the final utility report as well, not final, but completed utility report for everybody.
Great, very good, thank you very much. Mrs. Coonan?
I have nothing this evening, other than I hope everyone has a safe, happy holiday.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Rebelli?
I would like to just tell Mr. Baggett, our, you know, also known as our music and theater and whatever else department there at the high school, job well done with the little plays that went on last week, I was pretty impressed with what he, this man can accomplish alone, his department of one. So, good job, Mr. Baggett, and look forward to traipsing around the schools, I guess, and singing Christmas carols over the next few weeks.
Pretty good, thank you. Mr. Anderson?
Nothing tonight, just to wish everybody a safe and happy holiday.
Thank you very much. Mr. Peterson?
Pleased to do the same thing tonight, have a safe and happy holiday, and we'll see you all back in January at our next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and I, too, wish all a very Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, and we will be back January ninth. Thank you very much. Sammy? Motion to adjourn, please?
Move.
Thank you.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We are now adjourned, thank you very much.